All right, seeing as it is so won by one of our clocks, we'll go ahead and get started. The roll has been taken. Seeing as we have a quorum, we will continue to move forward, looking for a motion of approval for the agenda as presented.
I so moved.
Moved by Deb, second by Wes. Any discussion? Ready, Brian?
So Terry and Teresa, when you come up here, you don't want this spot.
Motion passes. No need to worry, Wes. All right, the reading of the school district mission statement. "The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be competent, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world." All right, next up, this is a time for board members and administration to identify any items on the agenda that could be considered a conflict of interest. Are there any waivers to present tonight?
Madam Chair, we do have waivers to present this evening. I'll go through each of them individually, and I'll pass the papers down for the board members to review. The first waiver this evening is being presented by Cameron Vox. Cameron Vox is the new principal at Camelot Elementary, and her husband is employed by the Brookings School District in an informational technology role. So there's that conflict to present. We have another conflict to present. Cameron Vox, father-in-law Chuck Vox owns M&amp;H Communications, which does provide radios for the buildings and cameras for the bus services. It's contracted service. So there's another one for Cameron Vox. Jason Schmidt, our Director of Technology, informational technology and information. His wife, Mandy Schmidt, works as a teacher at Dakota Prairie Elementary School as a technology teacher. Clint Willert, myself, conflict my wife, my spouse, April Willert, is a reading teacher in the district, an EL teacher in the district. Conflict presented by Chris Gruenhagen. He is the principal at Madera Elementary School, and his wife Lauren is a school psychologist for the district. And then finally, Laura Garretts, our Assistant Director of Business Services and Human Resources. Her husband works for, or actually owns Perkins, Storage and Transfer. And from time to time, we have employed or utilized their services to move equipment. And we recently had some moves for this district office, some equipment and furniture. So again, Laura Garretts.
And Clint, I think that every year we acknowledge that the bank tries to, wants to be the depository, but that's not done, and that's done on a bid basis. And so it's something I don't have to disclose.
That's correct. And given that that will be approved in the new order of business.
I know. And all the other conflicts I have, see what you can do about it.
Note to self.
All right, if there are no concerns, I need a motion of approval for the conflict waivers that have been presented tonight.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Kelly, second by Deb. Any discussion? We're ready, Brian. Motion passes. Maybe if we have another mouse, we could try that. All right, next up, need a motion of approval for the supplement to the 2021-2022 budget.
I move approval of the supplemental budget.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Wes, second by...
Can give it to Van.
Van? Discussion?
Just very briefly, this supplement's a small one. It's for the Special Education Fund. And it's just with wrapping up the year, just want to make sure none of our, the Special Education budget ended the year positive.
Follow-up questions for Brian? You're ready for the question. All right, motion passes. Next up, this is the second reading. An approval of revisions being made to Policy C.C. Administrative Organizational Plan. Need a motion of approval.
Removed. Second, I'll second that.
By Kelly and second by Deb. Any questions on this second reading? Seeing none, we are ready for the question. Motion passes. All right, next up, need a motion of approval for the second reading and approval of revisions being made to Policy C.C.B. Lines of Authority and Staff Relations.
I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Deb, second by Wes.
Just a note on the agenda, it says info, not action. So just might want to make that clarification. Sorry, I didn't notice that typo.
Yeah, I think it was. I just want, discussion, I just want to ask a quick question. Dr. Willert, we, in this policy, I do remember that we talked about there may be situations where you're going to be absent, and there would be, you would appoint someone that we could contact or someone could contact. And so that does not preclude that from happening based on this chart?
No, it does not. That would just be an organizational practice to inform board that if I'm gone for some reason, that I would name either Brian and/or Michelle Van De Reerd as the replacement instead.
Follow-up questions? All right, and then we are ready when you are. Motion passes. Dr. Willert, I might have missed, there was one item on the his/her that we missed, and I laid that on your desk there. What policy number was that for?
That is Policy CF.
Okay, so later.
School Building Administration.
Is this one? Okay, so then I would recommend on this that we would approve with that modification.
For context, it's the last sentence in the first paragraph stating they are working in his/her building.
All right, looking for a motion of approval for second reading and approval of revisions being made to Policy CF School Building Administration.
So moved. I second.
Moved by Kelly, second by Deb. Any other follow-up questions? All right, Brian, we are ready. Motion passes. All right, to wrap up our old business, we have a brief opportunity for some concluding thoughts and reflections. I might ask my friend and colleague Van if he has any thoughts he wants to share here as he's wrapping up his nine years on the school board.
Well, I haven't yet figured out how to use machinery, so I apologize to everybody for that. School Board, I think probably the first adjective I think about when I think about my life on the school board is humbling. Humbling in two respects. Number one, I appreciate the public's support for three terms, three elected terms, actually, two elected terms and one, there was no contest. So I appreciate that. But the other aspect of, excuse me, is humbling is that I, the work is never done. And the, I came in realizing that it doesn't ever start, and now I understand that it never ends. And I came here with a lot of thought and inspiration. My number one goal was, has been throughout the nine years is the support of the teaching staff, trying to determine what else, what we can do in a difficult environment, surely, but what we can be doing to help the teaching staff. We can talk about how important administration is. We can talk about how important computers are. We can talk about other things. But at the end of the day, if you have to pick one item that represents the quality of the school, it has to be the person in the front of the room, the teaching staff. And there, of course, are plenty of support people around that. So that has been a humbling experience. I've tried to make some, we've tried to make some progress. Wes, you and I worked hard back in the, back in the days of 2000, well, maybe 2016, when we finally got that half penny tax. But it still isn't enough, I guess is the way I would submit it to the group. Supporting the staff, I think, represents other, has other dimensions. One of them is that I would like to see us have made more progress in the discipline within the school. I'm not talking about military academy. I'm not talking about, you know, rulers on your hand, things like that. But I would like to see more consistent application of the rules and regulations and more consistent enforcement. I think that would be, we didn't get to where we are today in some of the reports that we've had from Chad Adamson and some other people. You know, we didn't get to this situation overnight. And we're not going to get out of it overnight either. But I'd like to see, as sort of a parting thought, that we think in terms of even application and fair enforcement of the rules that are in place. And a good example of that is something that I won't vote on tonight, but I, as far as I'm concerned, cell phones and other digital equipment are the devil's workshop. I think that they are certainly part of our life now, but they have to be managed in a proper fashion. And we have three or four handbooks that are in the, in our agenda tonight. And only one of them, the Camelot one, would be, you know, something that I truly favor. You know, it seems to me that we have to be, we have to support the teachers with a good policy, and then we have to support the teachers with enforcement of it. And so this is an area that I'd like to see the board continue to think about. I am a big fan of individualized learning. It's a big chore to move that initiative forward. But I would hope that the district will continue to keep the faith, to work, to find the proper leadership, to continue to make it more and more successful. I think it has been proven to be fairly successful at the very early years, in the very early years. And of course, it needs to move forward through middle school and high school. I guess one last thought I have with regard to supporting the teaching staff and supporting the district is that I would like to see the district invest in a bona fide HR department. You know, we spend a high, high percentage of our operating costs in wages. And it just seems to me that if you look at Policy or Action Number 5.3 that we just took this evening, you'll see that HR is about halfway down the line on one particular channel. And as far as I'm concerned, HR is just a representation of what's most important in the district. And I would like to see us consider a more leadership in that area so we have a more sophisticated way to analyze compensation, not necessarily the negotiated compensation with the BEA. That's not what I'm, that's important, and that's part of it. But what also is important and part of it is some of the other staff people that make the school run. We have to be able to say to ourselves, we're taking good care of these people, and we want to keep them on board and happy. So Melissa, I know it's a, I know the days are long, and the sun's going to be up for a long time, but I could talk until the sun goes down. But I think what I'll do is let go now and say once again how grateful I am, how humbling I find it to have had these years working with this school.
I guess I'm next, we're going down the line here. I would just like to say that I've thoroughly enjoyed working with both Van and Melissa. And we will miss their leadership. We will miss some of Van's famous quotes that he's contributed to our discussions, which has helped things to move along a little more lightly at times, which we have needed in some situations. But both of these individuals have are thoughtful, careful leaders that take time to consider options, to consider what we're discussing and what we're considering as a district. And I have really appreciated that thoughtful consideration that they give to all the issues that we need to address as a board. So just thank you so much, Melissa and Van, and we will miss you. But I know that you're moving on to bigger and better things, and we appreciate that as well.
I wrote a couple things down, so I wouldn't forget. But Van, thank you so much for your term and time on the school board. As you know, I'm just grateful and inspired by you and thankful for our work together and our friendship. You have such a steady hand in leadership, and I've just really appreciated that. You know, you don't, as a really emotional person, it's great to have a leader and person on the board that's really steady and doesn't get, you know, bumped by the waves of the high and lows. So I really appreciate that. You have a deep care for teachers and always have, even from my time teaching and our meeting during that time. And you really see above the fray of everything, and just really appreciate you. So thank you, and you will be greatly missed. Melissa, you're very committed. It's been fun to work with you and such a strong leader. You see a variety of perspectives and are just, have such kind leadership. You always advocate for children and mental health needs, and I've appreciated that and blessed to have worked with you as a mentor and friend. So thank you for your time, really appreciate it.
Okay, Van and Melissa were on the board when I came on four years ago. And there was, there were two of you, and there were three of us that were brand new. And so we had to learn the ropes fast, and thank you both for your leadership and encouragement. Van, thank you for encouraging me to seek out the vacant, open spot there for a one-year term. And I've learned a lot about what this is all about in these, this series of terms. And I think we've had a good run in terms of our last years that I've served with you, both of you, relative to some of the policies, financial strength of the district. You have to remember that four years ago, we came off of an opt-out that probably the community was wondering what's next. And we've been able to steer our way through the financial challenges of this district in an appropriate and positive fashion. So, and then I know it's, over time, we're going to learn to trust some of the things you've given us for guidance and reflect back. And I think that's going to be of value too. So thanks to both of you. I don't know if I get another chance to talk again, but I'm going to say it this time. Thank you, Van and Melissa, both of you, for your work and encouragement and support and the strengths that we've been able to, each of us, bring collectively, and we'll work one with, together to for the betterment of the district. So thank you.
For the benefit of the audience, I should say that Wes and I used to be friends, but I talked him into, I talked him into running. Now he doesn't hardly talk to me.
So six years ago, when I started on the board, I remember feeling quite overwhelmed and not really having any idea what was going on. You might be feeling similarly, I don't know. And there was a lot of amazing people on the board then, the administration, Dr. Willert, Brian, Laura, that all really helped me to find my way and understand logistically and operationally how things worked. And I tease Dr. Willert often because that first year was maybe semi-normal, and kind of everything was weird after that. And so his phrase would be, "This is not normal." Almost like to say, "Hang in there, this isn't normal. This is a weird thing." That was every year, every year it has not been normal. So hopefully, I'm wishing all of you more normal for the next few years coming up here. When I reflect back on the six years, I am just struck by the importance and the magnitude and the impact of these local roles that often can be overlooked. Some of the things we've dealt with in the last three years, sure, that it's not normal. But who knew all of that was going to happen? And the individuals seated in these chairs have to have the discipline and the heart and the courage to show up every day, invest all of their heart and soul into it, and fight for our community, our staff, our students, and this district. And I brought that with me every meeting that I walked into, the good ones, the bad ones. And I am just so grateful that, for this community to give me the opportunity to serve. It has been a great honor, so thank you.
But wait, there's more. I'm just going to comment by saying that I know both of you have really approached this work with a servant's heart. And over my career, I've had the opportunity to work with quite a number of school board members, and I would, I would mark you among the finest in the way that you've approached the work, the dedication, the commitment, the homework that you've done, understanding that it takes a team to make this place work. And it's a team of everybody working together. And while that doesn't mean we always agree, at the end of the day, we do what's best for those that we serve most intimately, and that's our children. So again, I just want to say thank you. And we do have some recognitions that we would like to provide. So I'm going to bring a couple of bags first, and we do want you to open these. We do want you to open these. But then I'll come back with a couple of cards. So we'll start with the bags first. Opening yours. And just to memorialize. And might you find the occasion to wear that out in Pira as well? And Van, now your turn. And yours required a little more homework because we dug deep into some archives of the Brookings history books, the annuals.
Does this have something to do with my discipline?
There were no cell phones involved, oddly enough. And while these are not the actual originals, knowing that you have been on the Bobcat team for a lot of years, we thought we'd give you a Bobcat jersey. And Van Fishback sported number 30 his senior year. And in the other package, Van, is a little warm-up to go with it. We're not going to ask you to try it on or anything because I don't think it'll quite fit, but... And Van actually played in number 24 his junior year, number 30 his senior year. So once a member of the team, always a member of the team. So thank you, Van. May you find a place in the bank or at home to display that with some pride.
To be, to be honest, I thought it was number 23, so... Jason, I didn't score enough points, so I didn't have to write down.
Next up, I need a motion of approval for the adjournment of the 2021-2022 Board of Education.
Moved.
All right, I'm going to second it. Moved by Van, second by myself. You're ready for the question. Motion passes, we are adjourned.
All right. I know we need to make some transitions. As we're doing so, I know, Amanda, we were going to make a quick couple of updates on... on the electronic school board. Board members, I think you should be logged out of your existing meeting and prepared to log into the next one. Is that correct, Amanda? Good thing we know a guy. And as we make the transition, we'll begin with the oath of office. Brian, I believe you're going to execute the oath of office for our two newly-elected school board members, Teresa Binkley and Terry Johnson.
For the oath of office, I'll just read it through, read through it, and then at the end, if you could just answer by saying "I do." Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as a member of the school board of Brookings School District, Brookings County, South Dakota, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, answer "I do," please. I think, and then if you could just sign them and then turn them in, or Terry. Oh, thank you, Terry. Sorry.
All right. Congratulations and welcome again, Teresa and Terry. At this time, audience members, those viewing at home on the screen, this is the time where we will elect the president of the board. And this is just a brief moment where I will begin by asking for nominations for the position of president for the school board of the Brookings School District for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, calendar year. So... There's been a nomination for Kelly Books to be the president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Oh, microphone.
Mr. President, or Chairman, I move that the nomination cease and unanimous ballot be cast for Kelly Books.
There's been a motion for a unanimous ballot to be cast on behalf of Kelly Books to serve as the president of the school board for the 2022-23 term. Is there a second to that motion?
I second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Ready to call the question? Or call the vote, excuse me. Right, you should be able to vote now. Congratulations, Kelly. The meeting is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Excited about that. We'll have good work ahead and fun to be had. Moving on to the next item. I think it's going to me, right, Brian? Okay. All right. Are there any nominations for vice president?
Madam Chairman, I nominate Wes Cheddar.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Not. Is there a motion to have nominations cease and cast unanimous ballot for Wes Cheddar as vice president?
I saw a move, and I'm glad you said all that, so I didn't have to.
Is there a second?
A second.
Nope, take to 6.4. So the motion was by Deb and seconded by Terry. Brian, we're ready for the question. How's that? Our system is being a little bit... The heat doesn't like it hot.
My term might be over here before I would give the election.
Very nervous, a lot of sweating. All right, here we go. We're ready for the vote. All right, congratulations, Wes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Work hard.
Yeah, I know. You're a hard worker. All right. Okay, moving into the new board, and we will go ahead and start this component of the meeting with comments from the audience. And it looks like we have four individuals signed up tonight. So this is an opportunity for the audience to address issues that are not on our agenda. And presentations should be as brief as possible. And speakers are limited to five minutes. And I have, I think, Diane Culver. Sorry if I have a wrong name. Is that correct? Okay. You have pretty cursive.
Diane, make sure the button is pushed on the bottom. Just tap it once. There you go. Perfect.
By the way, Van, I know a little bit about your basketball stuff. I was a little bit younger. Okay. Good evening. My name is Diane Culver, and I'm coming to U of U tonight as an advocate for two students who are waiting for a response regarding physical and mental abuse during the past school year. Both parties presented their cases in a proper manner, took the proper channels. And I understand that there was a policy bullying, unbullying, and reviewed last fall, last summer, whenever it was. School is supposed to be a safe and healthy place for students to learn academically and socially. School has failed these two children. One has refused to go to school and has enrolled at another school. The other student continued in middle school with failing results. Marcus and Mary, along with their son and Mr. Solis and his son, wish to have this reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I believe next is Greg. Teresa, can you confirm Greg? Just that form. Greg, thanks. Hi, Greg. Can you state your first and last name, too? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Greg McKnaugh. I'm a parent of five children, two at the high school, one at Mickelson Middle School, one at Camelot Intermediate School, and one preschooler. I'm here today to express my concern at the removal of challenging college prep courses from the high school. When my oldest was a freshman at the high school, she took Honors English 1 for ninth graders. Many days when she came home from school, she was excited to talk about what they did in Honors English 1 that day. She enjoyed being in a room of other students who were equally excited about learning. She really enjoyed the challenge of the honors class, and she looked forward to it every day during her freshman year. When my son, who's going to be a ninth grader this year, sat down to register for classes, he was disappointed to see that Honors English 1 is no longer offered. Last year, every advanced placement social science class in the high school was cut. My daughter had registered for AP American History and AP Microeconomics, and she, along with dozens of her classmates, had been looking forward to taking those classes. She was left to look for alternatives at the last moment. By my count, I looked at it today, the 2022-2023 High School Course Description Book lists 10 AP courses. However, for eight of these courses, there's a note that says, and I quote, "Based on staffing availability, this course may be instructed in an online format." So I don't know what the status of those courses is, but that means there might be only two AP courses available at the high school this year. This is sending those students who are interested in challenging themselves and their schoolwork to online course offerings. These online courses are taught by instructors that students will never meet, and students in online classes don't have the same opportunity to discuss the material and collaborate with other students as well. I do not believe that sending students home for many hours each day to work on online courses is good for them, either from an academic or mental health perspective. Online courses are also somewhat problematic in terms of equity of access since the families of students taking these courses have to purchase textbooks. In addition to qualify for the South Dakota Opportunity Scholarship, which is a Board of Regents scholarship, student must take four years of science. That's a requirement. However, with BHS not offering any AP science classes this year, senior student who wants to take a fourth year of science has no choice but to take human anatomy. Not having at least one alternative to this, such as AP physics, is a problem for those students who are interested in fields such as mine, which is mechanical engineering. AP physics would be very beneficial for those students. The Brookings School District has an interest in preparing students not only to pass minimum standards for graduation, but also in properly preparing students who would like to attend college. With the removal of classes like Honors English 1 and all but two of the AP classes, I don't think BHS is meeting this objective. My wife and I met with Dr. Von Fisher at BHS to discuss this, and he said the courses were cut due to lack of resources and that, and then he pointed us to the school board as the appropriate place to bring up these issues. I hope that the board can find the resources to bring some of these more challenging courses back to the high school so that students of the district will be able to better prepare for college.
Thank you, Greg. Jeff? Struie, am I right? Oh, good. Jeff Struie.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Struie. I live on the southwest edge Brookings. And I wrote down for the topic tonight, talk about the Constitution. I noticed that we don't start out with a pledge of allegiance here, and I think we'd make a suggestion to start out with a pledge of allegiance for every meeting. I want to talk about the First Amendment. A text, a cause and reason and meaning of the words. The text of the First Amendment to the Bill of Rights. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." The cause and reason for this. Due to the tyranny of the British who had suppressed free speech and the right to have public meetings, which this is, Americans also wanted to ensure their right to religious freedom, a reason why many had traveled thousands of miles to their new home in America. The meaning of the words. Is no establishment of religion, meaning it prevents the government from imposing an official religion in America, leaving citizens free to choose the religion of their choice or to choose not to have a religion. So this is all about separation of church and state. There is nothing in the Bill of Rights, the First Amendments, that says anything on the separation of church and state. There was an establishment clause created, and this says this. "It prohibits the government from making any law respecting an establishment of religion." Not only forbids the government from establishing an official religion, but also prohibits government actions that unduly favors one religion over another. It also prohibits the government from unduly preferring religion over non-religion and/or non-religion over religion. And with that, I have some quotes, and then I have a surprise quote at the end that I'd like you to thoughtfully guess. The first is from the Mayflower Compact of 1620. It says, "This nation is founded for the glory of God and the advancement of the Christian faith." The Northeast Confederation in 1643 says, "We came to advance the Kingdom of Jesus Christ and His gospel." The US Supreme Court in 1811 and in 1892 said this. "What strikes at Christianity leads to dissolved government. Our laws must be based on the teachings of the Redeemer of mankind. It is impossible to be otherwise. Our civilization is emphatically Christian." That came from the US Supreme Court. Theodore Roosevelt, one of those Rough Riders, said, "A community where men have abandoned and scoffed at their religious needs is a community on the rapid downfall." Dwight Eisenhower said, "Without God, there could be no form of American government, nor an American way of life. Recognition of Him is the first, 'Him' capitalized, and most basic expression of being an American. The founding fathers saw it, and with God's help, it will continue to be." A surprise quote. I'll give you a brief period of time to think of the entity that said this. "If the Bible is excluded from schools, if Christianity has no place in our daily programs, if worship has no part, it would be better if we placed all schools under church control." In 1892, the National Education Association came out with that proclamation in their annual meeting. With that, what Van said earlier is about discipline in schools. And I coherently agree with him that although I don't have children that participate in the schools, I did have, but he's correct. I hear from mothers and fathers, pastors of issues in schools. And I think Van just said it greatly that I think there should be a kind of a, maybe, a crackdown, but not ruler-ish, as he said. a crackdown, but not ruler-ish, as he said. With that, I also want to thank Vance and Melissa for their service. I was hoping Melissa would be here, but their smiles and their laughter is what said it all at the end of the meeting tonight, so I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, Jeanette. And I'm going to stand because I have some handouts that I'll give you soon.
I have to actually be in the microphone because we're recorded.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll try to hold it up. I'm going to pick up where I kind of left off with our previous discussions here in the school board, and that is my strong feelings about advocating for the children. I also advocate for others in my community who I feel do not feel strong enough to give their own voice, as well as my own mother, who 92 years old, living in assisted living. And I will continue to advocate for those people as well, anyone in long-term care facilities who are vastly underrepresented. So I keep track of things going on in the news, and one of the things I've just picked up on recently is that the national COVID emergency continues. I don't know if you've kept track of the dates as they've come and gone, and they keep extending the emergency. So the most recent point at where it could have expired was July 15th. However, it did not. It has now been extended until October, mid-October. And I look around and I ask why. Most things look pretty normal around Brookings. Most things look pretty normal as I travel across the state to visit my family and as I talk to others who live in other places, other states. However, things are creeping back again. So there are mask mandates going on in some of the states in our United States. There are actually mask mandates going on in our city and in our state. So I was recently involved with my husband in a medical procedure that he needed done. And surprisingly enough, masks in hospitals, masks in clinics, but yet no masks in grocery stores, no masks in Lewis Drug, Runnings, Walmart. But employees of healthcare facilities required to wear masks, which I know they do not want to wear. I hear them talking as I'm sitting in the lobby. So they're required to wear masks. Well, I sure hope this policy ends pretty soon. Well, the way that policies like that end is when we stand up. And I'm going to continue to stand up. And I think about what happened in 2020 when we were in the midst of COVID. What did we lose over the last two years, and especially in the dark year 2020, beginning with spring break that year? We lost time with family and friends. We lost time as a community, sharing and supporting each other. Our children, through the lockdown closures of our schools, what did they lose? They lost learning opportunities. They lost socializing opportunities. And now when I look at things that our school is dealing with, emotional issues, learning issues, developmental issues. The masks were not real great for young children either. I see that personally. Speech development problems in a young child who saw teachers wearing masks. She did not wear masks, but teachers wore masks for her first year of life and beyond. So my worries continue for the children. I also see and have seen people in our own community still somewhat pitted against each other, which I think is ridiculous. We are members of a community, a community that cares about each other. We love and support each other, and yet I'll have people flip me off or verbally F off. And I just don't think it's appropriate. So what I have done now is my latest effort to try to bring back some normalcy in our community and in our world is a letter that I wrote to our South Dakota Attorney General. And I will read the letter to you, but I'll first hand out an attachment that I sent to
Jeanette, just so you know, there's about a minute left of the five minutes, so I'm glad you printed it for us. Thank you.
I'm not reading this.
Okay.
It's a very short letter.
Okay.
So the document I just put in your hands is a proposed indictment. So we're talking legal proceedings now. Dr. David Martin, a very smart man who has done extensive research, is a very established business person with much knowledge, put together this document. And so I borrowed his expertise to share this information with our state's attorney general. Dear Attorney General Vargo, I am requesting your services in upholding your oath of office to protect and defend our republic and we, the people whom you represent. Numerous crimes associated with COVID-19 national health emergency have been committed and continue to this day.
Jeanette, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you.
I'm not going to stop. This is about a minute more.
Okay.
I understand you have a five-minute limit, but...
We do. And you are welcome to email each of us, and you're welcome to do the Ask the Superintendent.
I'm asking for an additional minute. Who makes that decision?
I do.
And you're going to deny me?
Can you make it 30 seconds so we can move on? How about summarize?
It is summarized. We would already be done.
Okay, go ahead. 30 seconds. Thank you.
Included with my letter is a proposed indictment, the one you have in hands, written by Dr. David E. Martin, founder and chairman of MCAM. An overview of the named defendants, which you can read then on your sheet, which includes Dr. Fauci, FDA, CDC, Moderna, Pfizer, and others. The violations that are being laid out in this indictment. Acts of domestic terrorism resulting in death of American citizens. This was a planned attack, and if you care to research the information, it is there. Conspiring to commit acts of terrorism, conspiring to criminal commercial activity, funding and creating a biological weapon, and four others. My closing paragraphs. The unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness sanctioned by our Creator have been impeded. The true role of government, which includes your office and your position as a sworn officer of our Constitution, is to protect these rights. I will disseminate this letter to others, and I've asked the state's attorney general to respond to me within 10 days. So this is a legal matter. The document I place in your hands is a legal matter.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeanette.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. All right. We are going to move on to our best award. And thank you, guys, for sticking through two meetings tonight. Appreciate that. Dr. Willard, are you reading the nomination?
I will. I'm delighted to. And board members that are new, community members that are present, and those listening at home, several years ago, we initiated what was called the Best Award, or what it stands for is Bobcats Exhibiting Success and Triumphs. And this evening, we have a special opportunity to recognize a group of individuals that put forth an incredible amount of time, energy, and talent to carry forward a message that the district couldn't relative to the recent bond, and that was a message of yes. And as we know, the outcomes are what they are, and we're delighted that the bond passed, obviously, and it's starting a whole new set of work for us. But it's the work that needs to be done, given the condition of our facilities. And this evening, we received a nomination to recognize the committee, which is called Education Brookings Committee. And I'm going to go ahead and read the nomination that was put forward. And then what we'll do is we'll ask for those individuals that are present to come forward. We have a little certificate along with a Brookings Best Keychain that you can sport for those that are looking for their college car keys or those that are looking to hand college car keys to a child. So with that being said, the Brookings School District would like to recognize and thank the Education Brookings Committee for their passion, dedication, effort, and a successful campaign that resulted in the passage of the school bond issue on June 7th to build a new Hillcrest and a partially new Madera Elementary School. The volunteer group worked collaboratively, efficiently, quickly, and effectively to educate and communicate the need for the facilities and succeed with a 69% passage rate. Education Brookings raised over $13,000 from 90-plus donors throughout the community in a short amount of time. That gratefully enabled the work of the committee to do the work that needed to be done. Thank you to Jeff Lee for chairing the committee. Jeff, thank you, and being such a diligent and active, and I might add, task-driven leader. A special thank you to Erica Peterson, recent graduate from Brookings High School, and her colleague in crime, Kesman Willard, who took on the brand, the image, the social media effort, and marketing of the campaign. The committee could not have done their work without your creativity and amazing skills. It is truly appreciated. We have heard that the group had fun doing their work and has made a difference for Brookings and our children both today and well into the future. Education Brookings helped enable the work ahead within our district on very important facility improvements. We are grateful to have such amazing partners in the community. And again, on behalf of the board, this Bobcat Best was brought forward, and I'm happy to acknowledge you and say thank you. So let's give them a hand. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I should read who all the committee members were. That was on the very front. I was going to save that to the end. So committee members Jeff Lee, Lynette Mc Mackin, Pam Carlson, Miranda Hillbrans, Dave Meyer, Kelsey Stoltenberg, Carrie Bianchi Rossi, Miranda Peterson, Kesman Willard, Erica Peterson, Steve Paula, and Rachel Paula. If you're here, please come forward. We have our certificate for them.
I'll get for a quick picture. It's kind of like kindergarten.
Yeah.
We're going to move on to board communications, and we'll start with the Performance Oversight I don't think we have a report from that group. And just so new board members are aware as well, tonight, we'll go through past month kind of communications, and then we'll work together to do appointments for committee work following this next meeting. And then that will be hopefully voted on and approved at the August meeting. So we'll have to talk a little bit, Dr. Willard, about cadence over the next month of that committee work. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Not really. I know that probably the most pressing issue is certainly our facilities and construction committee, and the two board members that are part of that continue. And then the policy commitment that we made. Deb can continue that work right now. I think we have one meeting between now and whenever the finalists are made.
And yep, Deb can continue to give us information. That's the binder. Okay, great. So nothing from the Performance Oversight Committee? Facilities and Construction Committee? I can go ahead and give a brief update on that group. So we started a cadence of meeting with the overall, Wes and I, and Dr. Willard and Brian, and the building principals, started a cadence of scheduled meetings with the overall team, so the architect included, as well as the CMR. And we're meeting here in this space so people can zoom in and get everybody kind of on board. We realized really quickly, we need to start pulling teachers in this month, just to get some continued feedback. We were a little bit unexpected of some of the detail they had gotten into in that first meeting, and so we'll work really hard over this next month to make sure that we're pulling teachers into that group. And we will do students, too, starting with teachers here. But yes, for sure, student voice. We started initial space designs and concepts. We're continuing our work through the early childhood education and the pre-K components of the future spaces. And I've asked Dr. Willard and Brian to start developing a budget for that, as that part is not a current component of our budget for the board. So we have a lot of work to do on that space. And then just started some additional communications with other stakeholders. I think Wes will touch on the finance part with the Finance Committee. Any questions or comments from the board?
I do have a question, Kelly. Thank you for that. How much discussion has there been for the new facilities to be green and to have those types of things put in? Is that something that is being discussed?
Yes. Dr. Willard can comment a little bit on that component, but yes, it is a discussion.
Do you want me to comment now, or do you want me to reserve my...
We have, yeah, either way.
I can reserve my comments till later in the meeting?
Sure. When he gives his comments, we'll just make sure to address that later.
Yeah, me, too.
Yes, great ideas. All right. Policy and Governance Committee?
We continue to work through all of the policies. We will be meeting next Wednesday, July 27th, with our next round. If you look at the ones that we'll be looking at tonight, a lot of them deal with medical issues, and we did consult with our school nurse to assist us with the development of those policies, and she oversaw what we included in those policies. So that's just something I wanted to share with you so that you're aware that we just didn't look at those on our own. We did include the experts in our district that will be dealing with those policies. So that's all I have.
And on those, so then, Teri and Teresa, if there's anything on those policies, you can work with Deb and email with Deb to get kind of some thoughts ahead of time of the board meeting, if that's of interest to you. All right. Human Rights Ad Hoc Committee? Dr. Willard, we had a question. Is Michelle Vanderweerd still attending these meetings, or who is our representative? And should that be something that I should be looking at for an appointment from a board member?
Great question, and Dr. Vanderweerd has attended in the past. We have had other school district staff members that have been part of that as well. For example, Dan Berg has been active and involved in those. So we do have school district representation. I know a few years ago, we had, this was a new addition a couple of years ago, because we did have a school board member that happened to be on that, and we said we should more closely align the work that's going on there with school district activity. So certainly something we can ask the city about.
Yeah. And if it is going to be Dr. Vanderweerd or someone from the teaching staff, if we can just have a brief report, so we have something to read out during that time, that'd be great. And if we need to add a board member, we can talk about that, too. School Finance Committee?
Okay. We met, staff and myself, Ben was not available regarding the bond issue. We met with Jerry of DA Davidson, actually, a week ago, yeah, today, a week, last Tuesday. And I just want to assure my colleagues in the board that we're on track in terms of our financing. The bond issue will be at the level that we have approval from the voters, at $32,430. Yes, rates have increased. We're aware of that. We're trying to work with that as best we can. We know that construction costs have gone up, so we have a lot of various variables that are changing right before our eyes, but I just want the public to know that we're working with that, that we're hoping to get a good bond rating, that S and P ratings will do the rating. As far as timeframe, hopefully by August 10, we'll have the bonds sold or priced, and then have the closing along about the 24th, approximately. then have the closing along about the 24th, approximately of August. So we need to get the funds in place, because we're starting to spend money relative to design work and a serious matter. So with that, I think, just to report that we're focused, we're going to meet again here real soon, just as soon as we know more about the ratings and the interviews process. And then, on the other hand, we're approving a budget for next year, but since Van is off the board, we'll have to have a new board member, hopefully I can continue to serve, and try to get our, refresh our memories, work on the operating budget for fiscal year '22, '23. Even though we have an approved budget, we need to ascertain some of the metrics that go into the budget, so.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Relations Ad-Hoc Committee, I believe we reported on that at our last meeting, and the group meets quarterly, so have nothing since then. The Mental Health Coalition, Deb?
Yeah, our June meeting was canceled, so our next meeting is Wednesday of this week. So it's a Zoom meeting, so I'll be in attendance at that. The Coalition continues to do work on those issues all across the city, and they're very concerned about the school district and what they can do to help the school district as well. So that work continues, and I'm sure it will for many years to come.
Thank you. Now's a time for general board member communication, so if there's anything over the past month and in the future that you're working on and want to share with the group and publicly, that's something that, this is a time that you can go ahead and do that.
I have something I wanted to share.
And I do, too. Go ahead, Deb.
I was honored to attend the National FCCLA Meeting in San Diego, California, and I just wanted to report back that our Brookings chapter was very successful while they were there. First of all, there is a Life Skills Knowledge Bowl with contestants from across the country, and the two finalists were Brookings, South Dakota, and Clark, South Dakota. Clark beat us out, beat out Brookings, but Brookings was the runner-up for the National Life Skills Knowledge Bowl, so that was pretty incredible. And they had several contestants, they received one bronze, two silvers, and then Ellie, Abby shared Ellie, she didn't say the last name, but a freshman in our district received a gold, and she had the 12th highest score in the nation in her category. Our state president is also from Brookings, Emily Hua, and she was this flag bearer for our state as she went across the stage for opening ceremony. And then two of our students were selected to give a workshop, and they did a workshop on child literacy, and over 100 applicants applied for that. So that's pretty impressive, and it was just an incredible opportunity. They are required to wear a professional dress, which is the red blazer, and they looked really sharp. And so over 7,000 people at the opening general session, so I just wanted to give a shout out to our FCCLA chapter.
Thank you. The additional item I had is just to ask if the board members with the new board would be open to adding a July special session meeting, which would be an executive session on Item 6, school safety, and just to be able to have some additional discussion on budget expenditures for facility improvements and making sure that we can all have that open conversation in executive session before our school year starts this school year. So I don't know if we can do a doodle poll for times, but wanted to see if that could be an okay thing that we could do as a group. Yep, it is tight, and I want to do it before the August board meeting, would be my feelings on that, just to address, we were able this past year to do kind of a general safety presentation, and I think it's important for the new board members to get that before the school year starts. Amanda, is okay to send out a doodle?
One date that conflicts, and that's...
Facilities?
We'll go ahead and issue a doodle poll.
Okay, thank you, Amanda.
Determine some options.
You want this before the next board meeting?
Yes, I do. We talked about even doing like a noon, I don't know if we wanted to do a noon session or something like that to go through, so we can work through all the details on that, too.
I have a question. No information to give, more questions to ask, but we are having a board retreat on August 8th, correct? And how is that agenda sent, or if there are things that we want discussed there, or is that already a standard agenda? I just have questions about what all happens at that board.
I'll let Dr. Willard address that.
So the agenda will get set with the board leadership, so if there are items that would come from the board to board leadership.
And is it, are there standard things we must get done there, or is it just what we want? I guess I need a little more direction.
Yeah, sure. So Deb debates is the guilty party on this one, because we did not have a school board, an annual school board retreat until she served as the, in the chair's position, the president of the board's position, and we started a board retreat. What we've typically done during that time is go through some conversation about school board goals, and that's planned again. The intent is that we would invite the administrators to that portion to have some dialogue, because so much of that interaction occurs in, from board goals to impact operations in the district, so we would work to do that. I think that we've talked about, just in general, from operations with Amanda and I, going over some of those things that talk about school district communications, what are we doing there, what are some things that we have in place with outreach and community engagement, so kind of high-level things, and then also talked about doing some, like inservicing things. We've typically tried to do that with somebody from the associated school boards. We've had like Jim Holbeck's come, he's a former superintendent, works for the School Boards Association, doing like a review of some of the major statutes, the new laws that have been passed, and then he's done a little workshop on board's, board work and boardsmanship. So we've thought about having him come as well. So those are some of the, kind of the bigger rock opportunities that we talk about.
And the idea, Teresa, is we have so many things usually on our agenda, that there is some of these big issues that we don't get a chance to really work on, and so that's why I proposed the idea of the retreat, so that we can address some of those things.
I agree. I think it's an excellent thing to have. Just one further clarification, so is that where we establish our goals, and then they're voted on at another meeting, or that's how that part works? Okay, that's what I mean.
I started working on those goals, and if we need to refine them over the couple months and get more information, can continue to do that. Yep, it's kind of set that direction for the year together.
Thank you.
All right. The superintendent will share some information about the past month, our other topics, and his board report is also attached in this item.
Yeah, so board members, as you will see, this month's the superintendent's report, and then in subsequent months, we'll start adding reports from all of the administrators in the district, including the directors, which is the cabinet team, to give some input and just give you a perspective of what's going on in the district. So just some high-level things to share today. First of all, and I failed to mention in my report, so I'm going to start out mentioning it so I don't forget, if you haven't, mark your calendars for August 6th, that's when the Bobcat Baccers event is. Even if you don't golf, at the end of the day, they have kind of a little grill-out activity, so it's always a fun thing to attend and participate in. That's at the Country Club again, August 6th. You'll notice in the board report then that I presented, this next week, July 25th and 26th, we'll have teams of staff members, administrators from each of the buildings attending the Reimagining Education Models colloquium, and this will be in Chamberlain. We had teams that attended last year, five teams, this year we'll have six teams. The high school was not part of it last year, they weren't in the initial round of grant support. And this is a state grant that's working with South Dakota State University and multiple school districts across the state to have some conversations about reimagining education models, as it says, and that's where we've had a great deal of conversation, discussion, and movement around the idea of the competency-based work. So again, we'll have six teams of teachers, their building administrators, attend that out in Chamberlain, the 25th and 26th. The School Board Convention, I think most of you are planning to attend, that's going to be a great conference, there'll be some opportunities to learn as you look at the agenda, a number of things highlighting what Van alluded to earlier this evening around student mental health, student well-being, teacher recruitment and retention. So again, that's a great opportunity to learn more about your craft as board members. There'll also be a couple of presentations, some recognition events, as well as some highlights that come from Secretary Sanderson, the Secretary of Education. So that's always a great event to attend down in Sioux Falls, so close and easy to commute. If you haven't signed up and you're interested, please reach out to Amanda, she'll help on getting that facilitated. The Foundation, which was started a few years ago, just before COVID struck, and it's something that's still in its infant stages, learning to crawl before we can walk and walk before we can run. They continue to meet, working very hard on a number of different items relative to funding policies, investment policies, working on all of the whole process of resource allocations. So whenever you start something like this, which I'm delighted that we did, and it was the work of the board that really helped move that forward, the Foundation Board isn't quite ready to do a presentation to the board, but I did earmark them and suggested that sometime at a future meeting, there would be a presentation at the school board, just to give our community as a whole an update on the work that's going on and some of the things that they're moving forward on. But like I said, right now, still at some formative stages relative to investment policies, funding policies, policies related to gifting and donations, so a lot of different work going on relative to the Foundation. The other thing I wanted to make a point to mention was district strategic planning work. You know that that was something that we had initiated as part of our process, and we're going to be developing a steering committee, if you will, for the strategic planning work, which will be about 10 to 15 people that reach across different components and elements of our community. I had a conversation today, for example, with Dr. Hedge from SDSU, asking who might be a good representative from the university to be part of our steering committee, and we'll work to reach out to others like BEDC, the Chamber, et cetera. And then, of course, staff involvement, some leadership involvement, and some director involvement. So watch for more details to come from that, and I would envision a couple of school board members serving as representatives from the board. So those are really the big things that I wanted to highlight and would answer any questions board members might have.
Was this where you were going to talk about facilities, or is that still later?
That's a little bit later, when we have a facility update. Thank you.
Yep, it's E 9.23. Keep it on rolling. All right, thank you. All right, Director of Business Services will get our financial overview of the previous month, and then can roll into the budget hearing as well, Brian.
Just very briefly, in the board revenue and expense summary report, I just wanted to note that we did get $902,114 from our insurance company. I did place that in the capital outlay fund I had mentioned at the last meeting. It's in a set aside, and then next, we're in this year already, but, so it's in this current year, and I'm going to put all expenses towards that, and then our auditors will have to do some kind of adjustment, because I don't know if it'll be part of our budget or if they'll do, there's another word for it, I can't think of it, but it's in our budget currently this year, so it'll inflate it a little bit by over $1 million. And there'll be more insurance money coming, that was just a partial payment. And then also, I did transfer $150,000 from the Child Nutrition Fund into the capital project, which will be used towards a Midary Hillcrest project. And our insurance, self-insurance fund right now, the revenues are about half a million dollars less than expenses, that was planned. So we had plans on using the fund balance, and we intentionally last year reduced our premiums to do that, and so it had the desired effect that we wanted, and it's dropping our fund balance, so it's not quite as high. If there were any questions for the bills, I can start on the preliminary budget hearing.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
And Amanda's going to help you, she's going to move the slide down to the next one as I go through the process. But again, this is a budget hearing, so if there's any questions from the audience as well as board members, just please ask at any time during the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide is just over, I'm sorry, can you? I'll get closer to the mic.
Question, should my screen be going with something else? Because it's, okay, I do my screen. Okay, got it.
But you can click it below.
You'll notice, Teresa, these are attachments, and so that's where you can scroll yourself or, yep. Nope, good question.
So this is just the overall budget slide, it's $94,798,000. Normally, the general fund is the largest budget item, but with the addition of the bond passing, there's $43 million in there for the project, which includes a mix of bonds, a $33 million, and then $10 million in capital outlay certificates, and I'll cover that later. But I just wanted to give the board an idea, our budget's almost $100 million this year. And look, I put the percents in there as well, and I'll cover them in detail in the next few slides. The next slide that, please, the next slide, the general fund, our budget in there is $27,248,000, estimating right now the use of fund balance would be around $488,000. Included in this budget is our ESER 2 and ESER 3 money, which is elementary, secondary schools, emergency relief, and there's $311,520 of ESER 2. We have $2,250,000 allocated that came to the Brookings School District from the state. And ESER 3, we have $922,500 in the budget as well, of which the initial allocation was $3,233,000. And I'll cover that a little bit more in detail, I have the actual slide that the board approved at the January '22 board meeting, and I'll show you some ideas I have for using down ESER 2 this year, because ESER 2 does end at the end of 2023. Additional items that I need to add yet, but I'm going to cover that later, is the Reimagine Brookings Education Coordinator, some strategic planning work, both of those are ESER money. I want to just, when I get all of our final 22 expenses in and ask for reimbursement for ESER 2 and 3, it'll give me a better idea how much is left, and I have not had time to do that yet. I have through the end of August, and I'll get all those manual entries and requests in, and then I'll have a better idea where to take them out of. And then the Foundation Director's salary, which was approved by the board last year.
And that's a halftime position.
Yes, she works about 19 and a half hours a week, and then they reimburse us for them. I'm waiting till the end of the year, and then I'll book it as a revenue coming in, and then they'll reimburse us for that as well.
Are we, we're going to talk about those budget additions? Or, I just had a question, the Reimagine Brookings Education Coordinator, we're just renaming that position from previous concepts? I'm just trying to follow the ESER documents throughout the time.
That's correct. We need to re-advertise, we did an advertisement, had an unsuccessful process, so we're going to repurpose the position and again advertise to determine if there's an internal candidate.
Okay.
And this is exact wording that the board approved in January for the position.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at old ESER documents.
No, you're fine. And then the net budget, I just thought the board might be interested, after the federal one-time money is taken out, it's about $26,140,000. Next slide, please. All right, you're on top of it. Thank you, Amanda. And I'm not going to go over this in detail, because this was approved at the June board meeting last month, but I do have a little QR code there, if you want to click on it or scan it through your phone, and you can see everything the board approved at the June meeting. This is just a recap. Someone wants me to go over it, I sure can, but it was covered at the board meeting in June.
You're so techy, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Next slide, please. The 2022-23 General Fund State Information, I thought the board would find this interesting as well in the public. Right now, the taxes that were set by the state payable 2023, the egg levy is $1.362, owner occupied, $3.048, they always have to go over to the third, and then non-agriculture and utilities, $6.308, or roughly $6.31. Again, you can scan the QR code, this shows the five-year history of the general fund levies, including the 22-23 levies as well, so it's pretty interesting to look at, but the slide was too busy. So it's pretty interesting to look at, but the slide was too busy, so I decided to do that. And I did do these QR codes. Laura helped to make a little better, because I had a dinosaur in there.
And they work.
And they do work.
This is awesome, thank you.
Laura helped me pretty up how they looked. I had a little dinosaur in the middle, and they look a little better. Next slide, please. Our enrollment information, I just wanted to put the last five years of our fall, September count. We did grow last year, which was great, 3,398 students, and we're anticipating that this fall should be as, growth would be up as well. We do use a three-year average, which is a negative one, because it's good to do a three-year average, because it follows history, but we are optimistic that we should grow this year. Next slide, please. This is some items I just thought the board would be interested in that are in the general fund. And what the general fund is, it encompasses most of our salaries for teachers, counselors, librarians, bus drivers, school board members, liability insurance, building, custodial expenses and repairs. It's a large, large budget, but some stuff I thought you might find interesting in there. We have a sports marketing plan, and that generates about $100,000 of income for us. Our sponsors are Calite's Electric, First Bank and Trust, I don't want to miss anybody, Avera. Ivy, thank you, Ivy. And Mike's, actually, tonight, we're going to approve another one for 3M, and he's looking for some more sponsors. We also do get a city of Brookings subsidy for about $193,000. We have to apply for that every year. It was set up many, many years ago, initially as a rebate from the utility, because we do receive utility taxes from other utilities, and because the utility here in Brookings, BMU is owned by the city, we don't get utility taxes for that. So that's what this was set up many, many years ago, and it's continued to be just by the city of Brookings. We also do have Title II class size reduction in there. We had three teachers, and if you remember in June, when you approved the budget, or the adjustments and reductions, we pulled off one class-sized teacher at the middle school. We still have two, one at Dakota Prairie and one at Midary, and so those two positions are federally funded. We anticipate in the future that they're going to start looking at wanting that more towards staff development, but right now, there's two teachers in there that are being covered by federal money. We also have Perkins in there, which is $35,000, and that is for CTE, it's a great program. They can use it for staff development or for student equipment or supplies as needed.
And they, I was just going to say, Brian, and they do have to apply for that every year. That's not just something we can say as a given. I know that the CTE coordinator has to apply for those ones.
You're correct, Deb. Same with Title I and II, we have to do a request every year, and IDEA money from the special ed. And this year, it looks like I just approved the grant this morning, it's around $45,000. I'll have to amend the budget for that as well. The safety coordinator is in there, that's about $10,000. We also have a school, two school resource officers. One of them's paid entirely by the city, the second one, they're paid, we pay for nine months of their salary, and the city covers the other three. And that's about $70,000. And I just thought I'd give the board an idea. The activities, if you're looking through the budget, we have, I'm sorry, it's not 6,000, it's 6,100. 6,100 is boys' activities, 6,200 is girls' activities, 6,500 is activities transportation, and 6,900 is boys' and girls' activities combined. One of the things you may see in the future, right now, our wrestling has some girls competing as well. I'm still keeping that in 61, but we will have to split it out someday and do boys and girls. Right now, they share the coaches, or we'll have to move it to 69, but I wanted to give you just a brief update on that. Any questions so far?
Yeah, could you just discuss a little more what the safety coordinator is and where that is coming, going?
Yep, and I can try. I know Dr. Willard's pretty much more familiar with it than I am, but when the police department came out and did that presentation to the board on school safety, the whole idea that behind that was creating a position to kind of oversee the overall safety of the district, and that position would make recommendations, help us with determining goals and what we should do first, and we don't know who the person is yet.
Okay, it will be someone in the district, in our district, that we hired to do this? Or, okay, that?
Next slide, please. This is the ESER 2 and 3 that was approved by the board in January, and what I wanted to do, and I apologize, it's so small, but on the 21-22 slide for ESER 2, some of the, we did not spend all that money. The custodian at Dakota Prairie wasn't hired, has not been hired yet, strategic planning hasn't been done yet, the bus driver maintenance position, and the staff development training. Some of that money hasn't been spent, so that's why I want to kind of look, reallocate and see if we need to take one or more of those positions out of ESER 3 and move them to ESER 2, so we fully get our money from the state and federal government. I don't want to lose any of that money. And same thing with ESER 3, we had some of that in 21-22, and some of those positions, we were not able to hire the school psychologist, that position wasn't filled. It is now. I don't believe we spent any of the behavior intervention and support systems. The Title I supplement, I don't know that we'll need that. I'll know more when we end the year and how our expenses are coming out, but we did have a person retire, and we didn't fill that position, so I don't anticipate needing that.
Could we talk more about that at the board retreat? The ESER stuff, too?
Yes, I'd also like to know with the ESER funding of the positions that we hired that were with ESER money, were those hired knowing that it was a two- or three-year position and that we'd go from there? Okay.
When we advertised, it was very specific that they're funded by federal money, it's a two-year position.
And some will be very challenging to walk away from, so we have some, a lot of planning to do in that space.
Oh, unfortunately, I cannot, I just copied the slide, and the color coding was a little lower down. I can try, but I'm going to miss something. The yellow on the ESER 3, when ESER 3 was allocated out, we had two types of expenditures we had to have. One was for directional instruction, no, what's the word? Direct instruction, not directional. Direct instruction, and the other one was for other miscellaneous items. And the yellow is direct instruction, it's a teacher, and the browns are not, they're other. Oh, thank you, Kelly. And then on the top.
It's small, that's an old copy.
So the yellow represents that part of ESER 3 required 20% at least go towards learning loss, that was a prerequisite, so the yellows captured that intent, that those were learning loss. And then because of our commitment and ongoing conversation about what are we doing to support the mental health and wellbeing of our learners, the brown color coding helped delineate those items that we deem to directly impact and serve some student needs related to student mental health and wellbeing. So that helps recognize some of those colors that you see there. When you look at the others, again, some of it's the purple one time during the year of the grant, the green potentially ongoing, we wanted to note for the board's discussion, because we were asked that question, which things do we envision people within our system or within our community might desire to have as an ongoing expenditure? That's why those are denoted in the green. And then the, kind of the orange off to the side, there were some pending state approval, those have all been approved, and then the purple highlights represented what was approved by the board back in July of, July 27th of 2021. So that's, that's the Christmas tree colors that you see on the, on the slide that you have in front of you.
I have one more question about, as I understand it, the Dakota Plains Academy or the Alternative High School was coming from ESER funding? Is that one of these lines? I'm just not seeing.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So when we look at the ESER funding allocations, you'll notice, number 19, oh yes, district success coordinators, you'll notice that there are 8.0FTE. That was delineated or was allocated, probably the better word to use, based upon the student enrollment at each of the respective buildings. Brookings High School had an allocation, if you will, of two individuals, and working with our high school administration, that's how those staff members were placed, was through the Bobcat Plains Academy. So that's where those individuals are noted.
And then just to reiterate, I have this right, the green colored, bluish-green colors they look like on my screen would be ones that we'd want to try to keep. Is that correct? Did my reading, did I hear that correctly?
I think that's to be determined by the board. I know that we were just asked to identify which items may be of interest going forward to retain, and the basis for some of those notations came back to what you heard referenced earlier this meeting. During the opt-out discussion, there were some recognitions that, that we needed a social worker, that there was support and needs for student academic support, so that's why the green, I don't think there's any preconceived idea that those should or shouldn't. I think though, it was just recognizing these have the likelihood of garnishing that type of a conversation.
Got it.
Or the opposite is that those that aren't colored are one-time. Maybe one-time for a couple of years, but they can phase out without ongoing budget commitment.
All right, and thanks, Dr. Willard. I appreciate you pulling up your slide there. Thank you. On the capital outlay, our capital outlay fund is used mainly for, there's debt service in there, computers, equipment for the buildings, there's some buses in there once in a while, purchases for athletic equipment, copier machines, et cetera. And so just right now, our projected budget's $6,262,000. It does include $268,500 transfer out to the general fund. That will be there for two more years. The only reason we're moving money out of capital outlay, this is ESER, I want to say two money, ESER 2 money, and it's reimbursement for our one-to-one laptops at the high school. Initially, when we had planned to do the increase for the staff, a year ago, we were going to try and move as much money in the general fund as we could to help pay for that. This was one of the things we had proposed doing, and so that's through ESER 2. And then there's also in there, I wanted the board to be aware, there's about $470,000 that, just right now, it can be changed, a plan for repairs or updates to the building. This would include, there's an elevator that's being repaired for about $20,000, some concrete work, could also include some safety work as well, and an additional I planned ahead for about $1,258,000 that could also be used for repairs such for safety items as well as deemed by the board, or it could be used for capital outlay certificate payment or cash transfer to the capital project fund. So there's some flexibility for either safety as well as the two upcoming building projects. I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Though I might add, we're trying to create opportunities in which we have some one-time money from capital outlay for the Hillcrest and Midary project. So, I mean, we've been talking about this for the last 15 months, ways we can dedicate, that's not quite the right word, but designate funds from existing resources to make sure that we get across the finish line with those two projects. And just for the public to know, one-on-one is we are using ESER funds for the computer for our students, which frees up funds in the general fund, and that helps us in our, also our capital outlay.
And then just to let the board know, I had mentioned earlier that I was estimating, I'll cover that, I'm going to jump, I'm jumping ahead, I'll cover Fund 41 later, sorry. Also tie in the next slide, please. This is just to give the board an idea where the $6,262,000 goes, about 10% to the library and tech departments, K-12 classroom equipment, which includes textbooks, they're no longer really textbooks, a lot of it's online materials, and that's about $830,000. We do business operations, a lot of that's the building expenses, $775,000. Transfer out, as I mentioned earlier, $268,500. Our debt is about 38%, $2,383,000. Activities, $70,000, and there's the set aside for Hillcrest and Midary, it's about 20%. Wanted to give you an idea where the percentages are for capital outlay, where they're being spent. Next slide, please. Our special education budget estimated to be around $7,404,000. That includes our increases for wages, benefits, and we do have out-of-district students placed at various placements throughout the state, and we are estimating right now a use of fund balance of about $494,000. That will have to be made up with the extraordinary cost fund. We have been applying for extraordinary cost fund for the past few years, and it's anticipated we will need it again next year. And I did not put any ESER 2 or any ESER 3 into the special education fund. There was a rationale behind it. We have to meet a maintenance effort any time you get federal funding, that can skew maintenance of effort. 2022 special education information on the next slide. Just information, our 22 tax payable 23, it's $1.599 per thousand, and the QR code, that's also a five-year history of the special education levies, as well as there's disability codes, and then the number of students that you have placed that disability, you get a certain amount of state aid funding for. Slide, please. Other information, our projects, in our special education fund, we have one program that's really pretty cool, it's our Project Search Program, and this year, we have five out-of-district students that are actually coming into the district, so there's $77,500 that's being generated for that as well. It's been a very successful program. We'll also have our own students participating as well. I don't know that number offhand, but I just was kind of excited that there's more coming in as well. So that's a bonus. And then our December 1 count, you can see the last five years, sorry, and however, the December 1 count does not really help with funding, but it just gives you an idea of the count. The funding comes from the students on the fall count, there's a percent, and then there's five areas that are, depending on where students are placed, that are also coming in as well. I should make one correction on the ESER funding. We did put in the ESER 2 funding, the one-time bonus the board gave a couple of years ago. I will be requesting that, I wanted to clarify that. There will be that money when it comes in. The portion that was paid out of special education will go back into special education. So I inadvertently misspoke on that earlier. Bond redemption, next slide, please. Sorry, is there any questions so far? All right. We have two bond redemption funds, Fund 31, it's got, has Dakota Prairie in it, the budget's $1,126,500, and the next one's a CAMLOT bond redemption, and that's $498,000. What, right now, what I'm anticipating is Fund 32 will be used for the Hillcrest and Midary projects, but because the sale of the bonds aren't complete, I don't know what the payment will be this year, so that budget will be supplemented at a later date.
Yeah, I just had a question on the December 1 count. Is that, when you see that number, is it that many students that are on IEPs? And, and so there could be, are there some that are being tested that aren't quite fully having an IEP yet that are not in that count?
Correct, correct, yeah. Our, our process includes assessment all the way through the month of May. It's an ongoing process.
And I should clarify something, too, that while that December count, well, it's 560-some, I think it was 595, depending on the count number, the students that, while that count, the big number's not important, that count is important for placement on those disability levels. So while the placement, there's a lower number, it's probably like 50-some kids, that 595, that December 1 count's very important, because it helps you with the funding on the higher need students.
On the all levels, okay.
The next slide, capital projects. This right now is estimated to be $43,300,000, $300,000 of its interest income, $33 million from the bond sales, and $10 million from capital outlay, and I'm anticipating that we'll spend about $5,300,000 this year, and that around $38 million will be put in back into the fund balance for next '23, '24's building expenses, when the majority of the building's being built. Next slide, please. The other funds, very quickly, food services estimated to be around $2 million. This one's a little different, because now the federal government's ending the free m-. This one's a little different because now the federal government's ending the free meals for all students, so we got to work through that. But it does include the increases in meal prices, staff benefits, and transitioning from the federal reimbursement, from all meals to the, just the free and reduced applications. The enterprise fund, that's $153,000. That includes our driver's education, our ACT prep, summer camps, one-to-one laptop insurance, and then our self-insurance fund, $6,804,000. And I'm hoping when the insurance company meets, or insurance company, insurance committee meets again this fall, that there'll be options to possibly look at another insurance holiday if it's looking good again as well, our premiums versus expenses. Other than that, I apologize, it went a little longer than I thought, but if there's any questions?
Additional questions? I think I asked this last time, Brian, about the transportation. Are we concerned that we have a, did we increase the amount of money that we're considering for transportation based on current gas prices and that kind of thing?
I'm glad you mentioned that. That'll be taken care of as well. And our natural gas prices have went up dramatically as well.
Yeah.
So yes, thank you for bringing that up.
So you did include that in your determination of the dollar amount?
Yep. The one offset is with, it does help us that maintenance position that we're switching over to ESER. A lot of that was coming out of the bus salaries, so we'll be able to make that up for the increased gas costs. So positive with using the ESER money for that as well.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go to our other communication discussion items, which is a big section on policy. We have one in first reading, and then we have a group in second reading, and then a group that comes on notification. So we are on the first reading of the revisions being made to policy JHCD, administering medicines And Deb, feel free to comment on any items I'm going to kind of go through.
Yeah, has been reviewed by a school nurse. This is the first reading, so if you have anything that you would like to see changed. But most of the changes came from the nursing staff and our associated school board suggestions.
All right. And then we're on the second reading of revisions being made to policy JGD, learner suspension or expulsion.
Yes, I have questions on that.
Okay.
I don't understand the difference between suspension and expulsion. I think that should be defined in the policy. The terms are kind of flip-flopped around, and I'm just confused by what the difference is. And if there is no difference, then we should use one or the other? But I'm just confused by having both of those terms and not defined.
There is a difference in terms, and I think the definition can certainly be taken under consideration by the policy committee. Because the definition, determination, and expulsion is for 12 months. Up to that is considered long-term suspension.
Say that again.
Expulsion is for 12 months. Other than that, it's a long-term suspension.
And does expulsion include, like, you're off the school list?
Everything.
Everything? I just would like to see those definitions.
I think that's.
That's a good idea.
And it's articulated in state statutes, so it may be as simple as making a reference to state statute.
Yep, okay. And then I had, find my notes here. There were a few typos I saw, Deb, I'll get to those. The notice, and Dr. Willard answered some of these questions for me, but the notice was just there and it didn't have a signature or anything. I think this was on JGDE4. And Dr. Willard informed me that that's placed on school letterhead and there's room, but I think then that should be in the policy, that this notice is sent on school letterhead with room for the signatures. I just think our policies need to be full that anybody who reads them can understand because we won't all be here and, you know, people are going to change. So that was one. On JGDE3, the first sentence just makes no sense to me. I can't, and I, again, Dr. Willard informed me that that was, came, but if you read it and it makes no sense, I...
I think I voiced the same thing at our policy subcommittee, but after visiting with associate school boards, that was the recommendation they still came back with, so.
I still think there's a typo or something that doesn't make sense.
Which one is that? Teresa, say that again.
It's JGDE3.
Okay.
There's just some words in there that don't make sense to me, and I just think if we're changing policies, we should make sure that they're written so that people can understand them. And also, I think it was on the notice form.
Yeah, it's hard to follow, sorry.
Okay.
And are we on, are you on?
I'm looking at the forms.
You're still on JGD, correct?
JGDE-form 3.
Okay.
If you read the first sentence, it makes no sense. It says, "In the matter of the proposed expulsion, suspension, or blank decision, the above entitled manor coming on for hearing on the..." I just, I don't know what that means. And it says, I don't know what, it says, "The blank of whatever decision, the above entitled manner, matter." But what does that mean? What is the above entitled matter? Because there's nothing above there.
That's what goes in the blank, but I don't, yeah.
That's where a school attorney fills that in.
Yeah, that's where that blank is filled in.
Okay.
Regardless, whatever that situation or scenario is that's being adjudicated.
Okay. So then, "coming on for hearing on the," whatever day of the month, I get that part. Why does it say "coming on for hearing on"? What does "coming on" mean?
Coming on the agenda, I would assume.
So could it say "coming on the agenda"? I mean.
So you're just giving that we need to look through these?
Some of this is legalese, and we, you know, these forms came from the attorney.
And we're on second reading. So Deb, as your policy committee works, as we're continuing to work through this, think through the cadence of the items that we want to discuss at the board table, what items you want board members to be emailing you and communicating with you, and how we want to work through some of those things, and maybe give some past practice and...
The thing would be tonight, the second reading, we don't do approval yet, I don't believe.
It's on approval for later.
Oh, yeah. So if you want, if you don't want some changes made, then we have to make a motion to revise or reconsider.
Or we can table that item, or put it to the next meeting if you feel like you want to dig into it more.
Yep.
And I agree with that, those, that work.
And, I mean, I'm going to keep going. I mean, and I can, I can work with Deb.
Actually, Teresa, yeah, can you send those to me?
Let's just plan on making a motion to table that item, and then we can work through those things.
Okay, great.
And if you have others, as we go through this, we can do those same components as well.
Okay.
If we can kind of clip along. Okay. So we're going to the second reading of revisions being made to JHCA, physical examinations and inoculations of learners.
Yeah, my, one question I have on that is, and I know you said school nurses gave input, scoliosis screening was taken out, was there any discussion on that or justification or just, I know it is controversial and it's sometimes not felt to be efficient or effective to do, but I was just wondering if people would want justification for that or not? Just in our discussion, it's...
That may have come under the state, changes in the state.
I believe that was recommended change from the School Boards Association and...
Was based on changes in state statute. You can see the legal references there, so I think that's why that one was taken out. I'm not positive, though, Dr. Willard, but I think that was one thing we discussed.
Okay, I'm fine with that then.
All right, we're on the second reading of policy JHCC, learner communicable diseases. Or did I miss one? I'm sorry. Okay. I think I did that, didn't I? I'm sorry, I got lost there. Okay, so both on the second reading of JHCA, physical examinations and inoculations of learners, and JHCC.
On JHCC, there's a list of report information for a student that has a communicable disease. And it lists a lot of things, but I think it should also have the parent name and contact information given. There's a list of, I think, seven things, but I think it would be important to have the parent name and their contact information given in that. Where am I?
Yep.
And we can defer that one to, to the next.
And then on the confidentiality portion, it talks about the public may be notified. My question was, if there was something in a classroom or within a school, would the parents or other classmates in that room be notified? Is that what you mean by public?
I'm wondering if we take everything that's on the second reading tonight, because I appreciate your attention to detail on this, and that we just defer the dates of all their approvals to the next meeting. And so we can all work together on the policy committee through that time.
I would be glad to do that. I do have, yeah.
Should we do that as a board?
Yeah, because we are meeting.
I mean, of all to that idea? Okay, so just take, we're taking those second readings of the ones that are going, and we will just, I'll ask for a motion to postpone. We don't have to table. We can postpone them to the next meeting date, and then we'll keep up the cadence and just do a double of second readings next time. Is that, is that agreeable?
And then I just work with Deb?
Yep.
Or Terry.
Well, we haven't done nominations for those committees, so we can work through that. And if we want to approve that in a special meeting for the committee work, when we do a special meeting, we could approve the committees in July, too. So if we wanted to get that going, to get policy work happening, to get back on cadence, that's something that we can take care of, too.
And just a note to the new board members that when we have the notification of a review of policy, that would be a good time to send us any suggestions, because then we can review that in the committee meeting, and it will avoid some of these things having to come up at the board meeting. So if you notice, there's several that are the notification tonight, those are the ones we'll be looking at this next meeting. And so any suggestions you have on those would be greatly appreciated.
Got it.
So Brian, should I be asking for a motion now? Does it matter?
Actually, you would wait until those are on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So when you get to the consent agenda.
Remove those from the consent agenda.
Make a, somebody can make a motion to remove those from the consent agenda. And then under item 11 on the agenda, you'll notice that it has action on items pulled from the consent agenda. That's where there could be a motion to defer those items.
Yep. Okay. So I'm going to skip down to 919 and go on to notifications. Is everyone, that's good?
And you can think that I didn't read those? But I will read through those.
That's just fine. No, this is good work. This is the work that we need to do. It's very good. And that's the work of the policy committee and want to get into those details.
And it is very timely.
And I'm just wondering if you're nominating yourself for this appointment.
I'm good on policy.
Okay, here we go. We're on 919, notification of review of policy JHCE, allergen guidelines. Notification of review of policy JHD, learner psychological services. 921, notification of review of policy JEDB, learner dismissal. 922, notification of review of policy JHFA, learner travel. And we'll come to do the motion in the next component of the consent agenda. And Clint, I'll ask you to do an update of the facility plan in progress and...
All right. This is the time.
This is the time. Skip over anything that we already shared earlier.
So we've already heard some of the financial aspects. We've heard that there's some design work, obviously, in earnest that's going on, and teachers have been invited to the next iteration of that process. Each team or each building will have a team representing them. And then we are also extending an invite to an individual that's part of our early childhood education, special education program. Amy Nielsen, who is phenomenal in that capacity, and she's done a lot of presenting and speaking and really engaged in that work, and has a tremendous relationship with many external providers. She will be, and she has been invited to be a participant in those planning efforts. Specific to the question about green and those types of things, we have asked the architects to start providing us with some cost-benefit analysis of doing some things such as geothermal, heating and cooling, to understand if there's some benefits in there, understanding that the cost of natural gas and the carbon footprint, all those things are important to measure. So we have initiated that conversation. We've asked as well to consider other green initiatives relative to water utilization. Some of those get a little more finite when we get a little deeper into the design, but certainly things that we need to be cognizant of right now. We've also asked about things related to the building elements, the design elements, considering what type of elements go into the construction that may lend itself to be a more green or efficient building. So the architects have had those questions posed. Construction managers, obviously, were part of the dialogue as well, so we will see what the next meeting brings. But we have started posing those questions for those very reasons, because certainly we want it to be sustainable, we want to be cognizant of those cost drivers that are impacting our general fund budget, as you heard Brian issue statements earlier this evening about natural gas, et cetera, and then just thinking about doing the right thing relative to the environment, so.
All right. We'll be moving on to the consent agenda, and I had asked for a motion to remove, Madam Chair.
Yep. I moved to remove items 10.8 through item 10.13 from the consent agenda to item 11 on the agenda.
Can I get a second for that? Or is there a second for that?
I will second that.
You can just make a motion to postpone. Yep, we're pulling those items. And we can just do a voice vote, Brian.
How about we do this, for ease of the technology, why don't we say that the motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items 10.8 through 10.13, which will be postponed?
I will accept that friendly.
And I will second that.
Great. Brian, we're ready for the vote to approve the consent agenda with the items pulled It's just one. And board members, it says approval and correction, it just lists the first one. That's the motion for all the items on the consent agenda. All right, motion passes. Okay, we are moving on to our action items, correct? Or am I, do I need another motion now, Clint? Yes. Nope, okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion for approval of donated items.
I saw move.
Moved by Deb.
I'll second.
Seconded by Teresa. Any discussion? Brian, we're ready for the vote. Brian, we're ready for the vote? All right. We're now moving on to the approval of the 2022-2023 Brookings School District Comprehensive Plan for Special Education. All, what, 113 pages? Or 83? I can't remember. There were two different links. Looking for a motion of approval.
I move approval.
Okay. Moved by Deb, seconded by Teresa. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Is most of that document, which you can thank me I didn't read it all?
I did.
But is that mostly just standard language that's there that you have to have? That's, okay, that's what I...
Required state federal law.
That's what I thought, just to be sure. Okay, thank you.
All right, Brian, we're ready for the vote? Motion passes. All right, I'm looking for a motion of approval for the 2022-2023 Classified Handbook.
I will second that.
Motion in by Wes, seconded by Teresa. Any discussion? I had a question on the snow day thing, not to get into major detail, but sometime I would like to address. So if a classified staff has a snow day, they're required to come into work? Or they aren't required to come into work? Or is that, every situation is a little different? Or I just was not quite clear on that.
This was changed a few years ago. It gives them more flexibility, and this was, I think, proposed by the board. But their options are, if there's a snow day, if it's an entire no-school day, no one that's part of the school has to report. Some secretaries do come in, and then it's either counted towards their number of days or not. And in the business office, they come in, but they do have the option, if the roads are bad or they don't feel comfortable driving, and they can use their vacation. The 12-month people have vacation. Personal leave, they can make it up or do a leave without pay.
Okay, I got it.
And if it's dismissed early or starts late, the people in the buildings, the classified staff, have the same options. They could use personal leave if they wanted to come a little later or leave early, make it up later on in the pay period, or take leave without pay.
Do you get any feedback on that from classified staff? Or not really?
Not really, no.
Sounds good.
I'm sure there's some negatives maybe with it, because a lot of times they feel that teachers can just leave, but they're also salaried, and I know they do a lot of work at home with grading, et cetera.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All right, Brian, we're ready for the vote. All right. We are going into our approval of handbook section, and this is something that we do annually at this meeting. And so looking to motion to approve the 2022-2023 Student Activity Handbook.
I would move to approve the 2022-2023 Student Activities Handbook. Second.
Right. Discussion?
I have a few things.
I do, too.
Okay, on page, starting on page six, it says objectives. I don't know, though, the second bullet is not consistent. First, they all begin with a verb. Maybe this is the teacher in me, but I think the second one should say something like utilizing each participant's unique talents and skills constructively, and use the same format then as we did for the other bullets that are there. Also, I noticed that the word student has not always been turned, changed to learners, and we're trying to be consistent with that across the district. So any place the word student is used, it'd be great to turn, change that to learner. I don't know if this is an issue, but I know it has been at some other school districts in regards to fundraising. And now I'm trying to find what page that's on. But our effort's made so that when a fundraising decision is made, and maybe that's a part of the decision process, that we're not doing something that's in competition with local businesses. For example, I know in one school district I was associated with, they were selling light bulbs. That was very upsetting to the local hardware store. So I don't know if we have any kind of, or if that's part of the principal's decision-making process. That page 32, okay. And I'm just bringing that up. I don't, do Brian or Dr. Willard, either one of you have an answer to that? Are efforts made not to be in competition?
There is a policy in place, and it's, everyone sees it. The teacher fills it out, or the advisor. It goes to the activities director if applicable, the principal, then myself, and then Dr. Willard. And so a lot of people see what's the process offhand. I can't think of anything like light bulbs. I know there's fundraisers for like the FFA.
Yeah, the cards are great, yeah.
And apples and stuff like that.
A lot of times they get that locally, even though they sell it, you know, through, as a fundraiser. So anyway, you guys are overseeing that, so that's okay. And then on page 29, in the definitions, I believe we should add co-curricular, because CTSOs are considered co-curricular activities. And that was referenced earlier in the document. And co-curricular just means that it's an extension of the classroom learning. So like FFA, FCCA, HOZA, which we're going to approve an advisor for, those are really considered co-curricular. So I think we should add that definition with the definitions there. And then the only other, I have another one more. And this, I think, Dr. Willard, I brought up to you about the student travel.
If I can interject real quick, Deb. JFC, I believe that is updated through our policy work, because that's a direct policy. So I think that would be
The definition.
referenced, yeah, because that's, if you look at, that's policy JFC-r. So when we update that policy,
We'll make sure we do that.
Yeah, we can capture those definition changes.
Okay. And then I think I visited with you a little bit about activity group travel. When should parents expect to be notified of the arrangements for the travel? And I know that I talked with you about maybe having, Mike having some kind of template that advisors could use. And I was thinking, especially if you've got a new advisor, beginning teacher that doesn't have a clue what all should be sent out to parents to help prepare them for the travel that their students are going to be involved with. And so I don't know if it necessarily has to be in the handbook, but it definitely is something I would like to see our activities director address with all of the advisors for student organizations when they're going to do group travel. And sorry, I had all those things.
I have a couple of things, too.
You're making me feel real good, Deb.
I got a couple of things. So on page nine of this, I'm just confirming that's in line with our new negotiated policy with the extra-duty component. Did Mike reflect that in his handbook? Do you guys know? And then secondarily, it's on that same idea. We added lane zero on the negotiated agreement. And so I didn't know if he needed to add a lane zero on that lane one, or if counting contract year meant that same thing. Or was, am I missing what we changed? Do you remember, Deb? I don't remember, Amanda, but I know we... Because I don't have a new master agreement to compare that to.
That lane zero reference, it wasn't a lane. It was year zero for, zero to 15 years for leave. It had nothing to do with this portion of the document.
Okay, so... Or leave, or not for pay scale.
Correct.
And I kind of thought counting contract year sort of encompassed that, anyway. Then the only other thing is, we have, we don't have softball in the schedule, but we're approving softball later. So does he want softball added to this document?
It will need to be added.
Okay, okay. And then on page 102, I just wanted him to add the word families instead of parents. So that's just really minor, so. He just addresses only parents. Or just a little bit more family-friendly language on that component of the document.
It should say guardian, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we want to do a friendly amendment? That Mike needs to work through formatting, bullets, spelling, changing learners, creating a definition of co-curricular activities, and changing the word family. Can we do that?
Can we just, how do we just say with revisions as suggested? Can we do it that way, Dr. Willard?
Given that there are the number of revisions recommended, I would suggest deferring this and bringing it back at the August meeting.
Okay. Does that do anything for his cadence?
It's just what we need to do, because you're not ready to approve it this evening.
All right.
Can I just say one thing? And I don't, just, as I was reading through these, and a lot of times they refer to board policies and give the letters. And it's a, do they have this as a digital copy as well? That you could just have a link to the policy? And so that, you might say, policy whatever, but then it's a hyperlink, then you can get to that policy. I mean, I know that sounds like a lot of work, but I like doing stuff like that. If, you know, if anyone would want help. I just think it would make our policies a lot more usable to be able to click into the things that you're talking about instead of having to go out and go find it and that sort of thing. But it's just a suggestion. I don't...
We've actually talked about that policy, too. Whenever there's a form, I think there should be a hyperlink to that form, or if another policy is referenced. And, you know, it takes some time, but it really isn't that difficult to do. So I would agree with that, and I had that down for the high school, because several times in the high school activities handbook, there were a lot of policies linked, or talked about, but they weren't linked. I was asking them.
Aren't easy to get to, yeah. Just a suggestion, and I'd be happy to help with it.
Okay, so who made that initial motion?
I did.
Teresa, okay. Can I ask you to amend that motion, then?
I will amend the motion to...
Postpone?
Not table, postpone to our next meeting to make the revisions and then approve at our next meeting.
Seconded by Wes. So Brian, are we voting on that? Are you able to change that, then? Okay, sounds great. We're ready for that vote, then? All right. Moving on to approval of the 2022-2023 Project Search Handbook.
I move approval.
I will second.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Teresa. Any discussion?
Yes, I just have one thing. On the page of Meals, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, but it refers to at SDSU and using Aramark.
Oh, yeah.
And Aramark isn't there anymore. So just to delete that portion.
And it's SEDEXO is the new food service provider.
Or just working with the university food service provider.
Give us longer time, yep. Thank you for noticing that.
Yeah, so that was just the one thing I noticed.
That's minor. All right, we're ready for the vote? Sorry, I think I clicked too fast. That motion passed, but I clicked through it. Amanda, did I, did that motion pass? I think I clicked too quickly. That's okay. Cammy, I've worked with this woman. Oh, let's see, if I go back, does it show it? No. I can't see if it passed. I'm assuming it did. There we go. Teresa, you need to vote on that.
I have to do it again, okay.
Sorry. That was my, I got click happy up here. Okay. There we go, motion passes. Okay. Looking for a motion of approval of the 2022-2023 Elementary School K3 Handbooks.
I move approval of the elementary handbook.
Second.
Discussion? In hall, well as, go ahead, Wes.
My comment is actually, increases as we go work our way down from 12, 6 Elementary to High School. That is administrators, even the board, deal with bad behavior. And it just seems like nobody's going to read a 48, 50-page high school document. And somehow or another, I just, I've always felt like something, something's missing. Some, it's in the policy, you could say it's in the policy, but I can't believe in anybody that's in a serious situation relative to this mere action, whether it be, oh, I won't go into, I won't go into violation. But the point of it is, somehow or another, we need to be assured that kids know the results of their early on, because sometimes they're clueless that, you know, threatening. I'm just not going to give examples.
Yep.
And I just feel like we just are short in terms of letting people, letting students know that some of the stuff is really, really pretty serious, and it may not be serious. I don't know. We can approve the policies. Maybe there's an executive summary or some kind of, I don't know the answer. I probably could think about a little more, but it's just always has bothered me because kids don't understand the ramifications.
With the discipline kind of components of it. When I was reading through, I felt like, okay, I'm at Hillcrest. I understand what I'm doing. Now I'm transitioning to Camelot. Now I'm learning a whole new thing and new words and new system. Okay, now I'm going to middle school, and I track it in my planner. Now I'm going to high school, and this is how it looks. It's like, okay, what do I need to do here? And how do we make our students, we're using the same, and not that the words are going to be exactly the same when you're talking about a high school or kindergarten student, but it seemed to me that the handbooks seemed inconsistent. And I'm not against approving the handbooks and letting people move on with their work, but does there need to be some sub-work handbook committee to go over kind of things over the course of the time?
We owe it to the students, but certainly owe it to the parents who are not going to read this policy.
Yeah, no.
And they, I won't say they're clueless. They could think about what might happen, but they're surprised.
Yeah. I guess as a parent, I'm like, okay, what do I need, what does my kid need to send? What's the weather sort of situation like? Who's my advocates on my side? Who's my kid's principal? Who's the teacher? And it gets really kind of, there's a lot to dig through as family-friendly kind of component.
I would agree with that. On the other hand, I think it's probably a way to make sure that we're covered.
I agree.
Because it's there. But the other thing, the consistency, I mean, these are simple things, but we need to replace students with learners throughout the document. And that hasn't been done through all three, or all the documents. And then also, we talked about this last year, using a consistent font.
Same font, same color, same format.
Because when you change fonts, it's like, oh, they just plugged this in, or they, you know, it's copy and paste. And I, as a, I mean, as a parent, I would go, oh, they must have copied this one from somewhere else and plugged it in. So we just need to be consistent with that, and it's a simple thing, but somebody needs to take ownership of that.
I would mention for the middle school and high school handbooks, there is the Discipline Matrix, which does concise everything down to a few charts that says, if you do this, this is your first infraction, second infraction.
I think it's on page 42. I'm just picking it up. It's out there.
Yeah, but maybe that needs to be pulled out and put somewhere.
As far as we're concerned, it's in policy, and we abide by it in terms of our action. But I feel for the parent who sits here, or sits in the administrative office and says, sorry, I missed this, and they shouldn't have, but they did.
This may be an opportunity...
I don't really answer, I just...
This may be an opportunity for, when we have the retreat, for our administrators to share how that's communicated, because I know it is reviewed, I know it is shared. And you're absolutely right, Deb, in your observation that our policies
that our policies that are embedded in, included in the, in the handbooks ensure that if indeed there's an infraction, that it is something that the, that the district can act upon. So again, I think there's an opportunity just to share how that is communicated because I know it is. I know our principals work with our teachers. There's a lot of work that goes on those first couple of days of school. If you recall, those are times where we have individual appointments at the elementary levels, and I know there's visits at the middle school and high school. So it's, it's the administrator's job to ensure that those things are happening, and the board's job to ensure that the policies are there. And so we'll, we'll work with the administrators to ensure that that's communicated, how that's happening, so that there's assurances. And then back to the big point that was made about consistency across the handbooks. One of the things that our administrative team has talked about, and we weren't able to do it this year, but identifying a couple of interns that are going through a post-secondary program and assigning that as a task or a duty that they could compile everything into one digital handbook that then says, "Discipline. Here's the K-3 section, here's the Camelot section, here's the middle school section, here's the high school section, field trips, here's the elementary section, here's, you get the idea." And that's something that we've endeavored to do.
Dr. Willard, the students that are in the ed leadership that are wanting to become administrators, that would be a good exercise for them.
Absolutely. It doubles down on not only building awareness, but then applying that practice of creating the documents so that they are clearly communicated. So, and the other part that I think is important to note, I was making some notes here as I was listening to the discussion. One of the things that we are working very hard on, and again, we have teams from each of our buildings for consistency in the district around language with the positive behavior intervention supports, that PBIS work.
I love the addition of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry this brought it up. I just really feel like we're, we all, we can do better in terms of something.
And I do have small things on the elementary handbooks, I guess. I didn't know if for Hillcrest and Midary, we wanted to add that the drop-offs might change at some point this year, just so parents are maybe aware of some spring changes to drop off and pick up. And I don't know if that will happen with the facilities. But I didn't know if we wanted to do any heads up, or we can circle back on that.
I don't think you'd change it in the policy if it's just for a short term.
It's in the handbook. It's in the handbook, it shows where to drop. I just am giving parents a heads up at the beginning of the year. This spring, you might see a change. It also says on there that we're doing inner-city bus routes. And I don't believe we've decided that for sure. I think those are the only two things, so really small, minor things.
I had some things as well. First of all, I do have the drop-off changing, Kelly, so that was there. But then I have, there's some little section on bullying, and I think that the district policy should be mentioned there as well. A medication policy, I don't know if we deferred that or not, but that policy said administering medication, that the parent is the one that should bring the medication to the school. And the hand, the elementary handbook listed a lot of those things, but I think it should be added that it should be the parent that brings the medication to the school. And then also, parent or guardian. And then also, in the elementary handbook, it said, "School board meetings were at Dakota Prairie the second Monday at 6:00." And I believe that's going to be changing. The time is going to be changing, so just a few heads up in that handbook. Those were the things I saw in the elementary handbook.
I would recommend a motion to defer to the board again.
Right, so who made...
All four or just this one?
I was fine with the Camelot Middle and High. I didn't have any other additions to those.
I would say, I would say we take one on their own merit, so I would recommend, let's deal with this. Defer this one and then have the conversation about the other ones individually. I move...
Who made the motion about the elementary handbook?
Postpone, I think.
I think I did. Okay, so same thing.
I move to postpone the adoption of the elementary handbook. Seconding that.
I'll second that.
Okay, ready for the vote? Question. Am I not you guys? Okay. Tired? Why we're changing the meeting times? 5:15. Nothing. What do I do? I did that.
Are we meeting again?
No. Do you want me to hit next item? Try previous item?
No, we're good.
Okay, but that's Project Search, actually.
You got the search rule come up, you see that?
Now let's try this one. Okay, Brian, try again. Yep. And any ideas? I have nothing showing up. I think I'm on the right side. Do you want me to do the same or no? We can do a little five-minute, four-minute recess and try to get this figured out. I can keep running this meeting without them too. Okay. All right. Now we're looking at the Camelot Handbook. And Kami is here, so she might take us out if we have to do this next one. Just totally teasing. All right. Looking for a motion and a second for approval on that.
I move approval.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Terry. Any discussion on that?
I just have one question. On page 34, it listed services. And Title I reading was crossed out, and I'm sure that's just a requirement, whatever. Why, why that was crossed out?
Just wait, I need to get to 34.
Okay, so the, okay. And I figured it was out, but I just wanted to be sure.
And kudos Kami, change students to learner all the way through.
We'll wait for the policies to change, and then that's when that'll happen, so. Yep.
It's not a problem. And then the only other thing I was going to say is that there's no principal contact information on that and there is on all the other handbooks. Maybe I missed it, but it'd be good to add that on there. All right. Brian, we're ready for the vote to approve that Camelot Handbook. Oh, gosh, see, I did it again. See, this is where I get click happy. I'm sorry. First time doing this. Can you see if that was approved? I clicked too fast. I'm, I'm sure I am the culprit here. There it is. Sorry, I got fast fingers. All right. Thank you, motion passes. All right, now I'm looking for a motion of approval of the 2022-2023 Middle School Handbook.
I would move to approve the 2022-2023 Middle School Handbook.
Okay, moved by Teresa, seconded by Wes. Any discussion?
I do have a few items on that. On page three, cyberbullying was listed, and then cyber was crossed off. But this text still refers to internet stuff, so I didn't understand that.
It's all forms of bullying, I think.
But, but the text behind it just says, "Internet." Around middle school, right?
Yeah, I don't see page three, cyber, so attendance at that component.
Okay, just wait. Okay, well, let's move on to this one then. Again, there were some board policies I thought that could be in. And again, this one too has medication portion. I did, maybe page 13? Am I on the right thing? And that again, if, if our medication policy has, parents should be the ones to bring it. I think that it should also be listed in this handbook that parents should be the ones to bring in the medication at school.
So is the board wanting to approve, or is the board wanting to defer this handbook? Postpone?
We can postpone it. I had one thing on number seven, but I don't know how it could be changed. This is the human development person in me. Lower the guidelines to prevent the loss of computer network privileges. Everything is negative. Do not do this, do not do that, do not, you know. I like it when it's like what you should do in terms of positive behavior because that's what we're trying to enforce. So I, as I looked through them, I wasn't sure how I would reword them, but I think we should take a look at that. We're saying positive behavior is what we're wanting to influence with our students.
Remind me who made the motion? Teresa, okay, if you can go to postpone that.
I would motion to postpone the, accept the approval of the MMS policy handbook, our student handbook.
Second.
Okay, Brian, we're ready for the vote? It's doing that same thing. No. Yep. That's just weird. Right? All right, looking for a motion of approval for the high school handbook. I didn't have a lot on this, so if you do, maybe you just start out with making a motion to defer. I didn't have anything on this.
I don't have a lot, but I have one or two things that would be easily to address. So I move approval of the high school handbook.
I would second that.
All right, any discussion?
We think again, we change student to learner, and then a hyperlink to policies, which we've talked about. So that was the only thing I had for the high school one.
All right, Brian, we're ready for the vote? And it worked. Right, motion passes for approval of the high school handbook.
Can I just have a comment on there? Is the Prairie Academy Alternative School follow the regular high school handbook? For classes and credits and stuff, might it change a little for them or...
Credits wouldn't change. There may be different class offerings, but credits don't change.
They have to complete so many credits.
Still complete the number of credits per, again, that's back-to-board policy on the number of required credits for a diploma from Brookings High School.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the sports marketing agreement for 3M. I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Brian, we're ready for the vote? Motion passes. Looking for a motion of approval for the Rutland School District to pick up and drop off students at the Casey's General Store on Sixth Street.
I second.
Any discussion?
Just, why? I mean, that always happens? They come to town and there's some kids here that go to Rutland and, okay.
Yep. We're ready for the vote? Question. Got to get going. Saying it right. Thank you.
On a side note, they don't need to get approval out of the country. It's only in-town.
Out of the county? County?
Outside of city limits.
Out of city limits, I'm sorry.
I thought you said country.
They could pick out in the country anywhere without permission.
All right.
That was, that was sort of my question. Like I thought, oh, I thought buses went all over in different places, but...
Looking for a motion of approval for the Alton School District to pick up and drop off students at the Little Hall in Aurora. I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Terry. Any discussion? Brian, we're ready for the question? Motion passes. All right, looking for a motion of approval for the... All right, looking for a motion of approval for the MOU between the South Dakota Board of Regents and the Brookings High School for the continuation of Math 114 in district course offerings for spring 2023.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by Wes. Any discussion? We're ready for the question. Motion passes. Looking for a motion of approval to add extra duty positions to the 2022-2023 Master Agreement.
I moved approve the added extra duty positions to the 2022-2023 Master Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Teresa, seconded by Terry. Any discussion?
Two of these are for the softball, which will be a new sport, correct?
Yep.
And I don't, I was going to ask, what does HOSA mean?
Health Occupations Student Association.
Student Association, thank you, Deb, yes.
Okay.
And that was part of our recent workforce development grant that we sought and received through the state. So that's where that one's at. And then the FFA Assistant Advisor is an equity discussion as we mirror some of the opportunities that exist for FCCLA, equally creating those opportunities through FFA.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ready for the question? Motion passes. And just so the new board members know, we reserved this motion for Wes.
I move.
Just kidding, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, moved by Wes. I gotta keep with the practice.
I second that motion.
All right, ready for the question? Yeah. Motion passes. Just for public kind of awareness, we have moved the school board meeting time to 5:15, and so you'll see that reflected on our new meeting schedule and new cadence, and the same location. Yep. Okay, go on, Clint.